The time on the meeting. I'm using your clock. Oh, it's off by five minutes.
Forgot to tell you about that.
License? Yeah. Through ASCA. What is that?
Wow, we got a lot of people today. That's awesome. You're on, Mr. Mayor.
All right. 100 hours.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to City Council Meeting for the City of Clear Lake. Today is January 25th. May I please have a roll call?
Mayor Sabatier.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Bennett.
Here.
Councilmember Overton.
Here.
Councilmember Perdop.
Here.
Thank you, all present.
Councilmember Overton, will you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would please remain standing, we have Pastor Dave Rogers, who would please come.
Thank you very much. Thank you, heavenly Father, that you're here with us tonight. Matter of fact, you're here with us every day. Father, we invite you this night to help us do the business of our little city. Father, I pray for a blessing on every member that's in charge of our business in our city in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your words. Mr. Folsom, is there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor, no changes to the agenda.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as is?
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. We're going to do public comment. I have two public comments here. I'm going to call them up. If there's any other public comments afterwards, please step up to the microphone. You will have three minutes to speak to the council. We may not discuss the topic that you discuss, or else this would be a Brown Act violation. However, if you want to discuss a topic that is on agenda, please go ahead and wait for that agenda item. Thank you. Number one, I have Ms.
Hi there.
Good evening.
I'm Kay Lopez. Well, I'm not up here to complain this time. How about that? I want to thank Bruno Sabatier, is that how you pronounce it? For listening and caring about the animals and working with us towards a solution. At some point, I would like to have a meeting with you to go over what worked for us in animal control, and you can take the ideas or leave them. But it worked for us well, and it might help you to have a better shelter. Field tips and filling out proper paperwork so that there's no mistakes. And then I know that there's heaters coming in, so just a caution, be careful they're not near flammable gas. And then thank you for the networking. There you are. I thought you were over here. Thank you for the networking on Facebook. I think there was three dogs adopted in one day. I'm not sure, but there's been a big turnaround just by networking. And I may have found my next dog. I saw her last night. So I'm thankful to see that the plight may have a happy solution by getting the dogs out of the auto repair shop and into a real shelter. We can, and having rescue groups on the ready. So if we're all working together, we can do this and we can have a really nice shelter. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Rita Lafer. I hope I said that last name correctly. It's kind of like Sabatier, it goes anyway.
Hi, everybody. I guess most of you know me. I am a member of Animal Coalition, and I want to just speak these few little words to let you know that we want to work with the city. We want to help as much as we can because, you know, we've got a great city with a lot of wonderful, wonderful people that care about the city and the animals. And the animal situation is bad, as everybody knows. And it's not, it's not the city's fault, a lot of it. A lot of it has to do with people that don't care about spaying and neutering their animals. You know, it's acceptable for them, oh, let's have puppies because, you know, make her a better dog, or let my children see the birth of puppies to show what nature's like. That's not what it's about. We need to get this under control, and Animal Coalition is here to help in any way we can. And, you know, because we have a 501(c), we can adopt animals out. We have wonderful people that are doing this right now where they foster a lot of animals for Clear Lake that nobody even knows about. And I know that if we get together, we could make this a wonderful city and wonderful for the animals and the people that live in it. That's all I have to say. Bye, you guys.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to step up to the microphone and give a public comment? All right, moving on to consent agenda. Any item wished to be pulled by the council? Is there any item that the public would wish to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing none?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda submitted.
Second? Got a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? None. Moving on to item number six for a verbal update of the sulfur fire recovery process, Mr. Folsom, all yours.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Hey Dirk, can you hit the light?
Dirk, the light.
Just on that one side, yeah, thank you. Okay, so we've gotten a little snazzy here, as you can see. Our audio as well. But we've got two new projectors, one that's going to be up on that wall. We're going to change out this projector to one where we get a bigger screen there, so in the future, all the folks in the audience are going to be able to see better. That has nothing to do with sulfur, except for the presentation here. Progress does continue on the cleanup. We have 155 ROEs, rights of entry for debris removal that were completed. All of those sites have been cleaned. 114 of those have been signed off, because once they're clean, they do have to go to be tested, and once they come back that they're good, then they are returned to the county and a letter is sent out to the property owners. And 114 of those have been sent back to the county at this point. There are 13 owner cleanups, and those are still in progress. There are two summary abatements. If you recall, we went through a whole summary abatement process. At the time, there were six summary abatements. We've gotten those down just to two. So those are still outstanding, but they'll be getting to those shortly. So the contractors are basically done, the contractors through Army Corps of Engineers, they're basically done pending final testing of the debris removal sites and the cleanup of the abatement properties. The information that I was given is that as of yesterday, there were 22,583 tons of debris that were removed. That's quite a bit of debris. However, when you look at what's being removed in some of the other counties, that's really a drop in the bucket. So there's been close to a million tons of debris removed from all these fires so far. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Colonel Eric McFadden from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the other state and local and federal reps that have showed up here and have them kind of give you all the final update. This is probably going to be our final update on the sulfur fire, so I'm real excited about that. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers of Clear Lake City. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you here tonight. It's our honor to be here, standing here in front of you, to announce that we're 100% complete with debris removal operations, with the exceptions that were highlighted. We do still have some re-scrapes and some sampling ongoing, as well as two abatement properties that we'll be addressing here very shortly. We believe that within a week, week and a half, that we could address the abatement properties. That's our goal, and that's what we've been working through tonight. Do you want to highlight, just to echo what you've talked about, in just over two and a half months, 2,700 parcels across four counties, over about a million tons of debris removed? No small feat. And really, it takes a community to help a community. And so we fully recognize that we wouldn't be standing here in front of you today if it wasn't for the community effort that's been done. It's the whole community that really brings us together. And it is a cause for celebration to be 100% complete, but there's still work to be done, especially across all four counties. I do want to reiterate, we still have an issue resolution process that's ongoing. Our call center is still operational, and our issue resolution process really starts with identification of the issue. We undertake the issue, we do a technical assessment, analysis, and then if necessary, we'll send a contact team to meet with the property owner on site, document the concern with the goal of resolving the issue as quickly as possible. We're currently working those across all four counties, and we are working one in Lake County as we speak. Do you want to recognize the fact that, as I pass it off, we wouldn't be where we're at today if it wasn't for the dedication of a core employee in the team that she has put together? She's been here since the beginning. I'd like to recognize Ms. Leah Peterson. She's here in the audience with me. She is a significant amount of personal commitment to Clear Lake and Lake County, and because of that, we're at 100% ahead of schedule. So without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to FEMA for comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Colonel. My name is Robert Pezzapain. I am the Branch One Director overseeing the recovery efforts for Lake Mendocino, Napa, and Sonoma. I'm also your Region Director of National Preparedness and the Federal Preparedness Coordinator for our FEMA region. First, good evening, and thank you for having us speak tonight on the closeout operations for recovery. The Colonel already touched on our debris removal program, but I want to touch on the individual assistance. And so for Lake County, we had about 520 applicant registrations with our individual assistance program, and we've already dispersed over $600,000 in the hands of survivors. Additionally, the Small Business Administration has received the same applications, 520, and they've approved $540,000 for small business loans, as well as business loans to those that were affected. Our recovery operations continue. We have Alan Ball here, who is our Division Supervisor for Mendocino and Lake. He'll remain here overseeing the recovery operations on the ground until everything is completed. We'll continue to close out operations with county officials as well. With that, I'll turn it over to Sarah Finnegan from Cal OES, so thank you.
Good evening, council members, and good evening to the public as well. I just wanted to introduce myself this evening. I am your Division Supervisor from Cal OES, and I'm also your Emergency Services Coordinator for Lake County. I began with Cal OES just in October, right at the beginning of these fires, and I've spent the last month or so, just since after Christmas, with my focus on Lake County. It's been a wonderful opportunity to work with the different partners, to work with the county employees, and also with the city leadership that is here, who is very dedicated to the community that was affected, but even more so to the community as a whole, to bounce back and rebuild and to become resilient to whatever other disasters may come in the future. I appreciate the time that you've spent to listen to us and to have us in your home and your city and to participate with this cleanup. It's been quite the effort. I also wanted to introduce Alan Ball, who is my counterpart with FEMA, and also Rick Britzman with LDL, what is it, Government Liaison? Local Government Liaison, who's been working closely with both Mendocino and Lake Counties as well. As we move forward, and I will have a chance to work with you in the future as well. So thank you for your time.
If I can have you all stand back up, please? We have some certificates. Oh, is there one more person?
Dean.
Dean, I'm sorry, Dean, I skipped over you.
That's okay. I'd like to introduce myself really quick. My name is Dean Eickelman. I'm with Lake County Environmental Health. Thank you all for inviting me this evening. I wanted to say thank you very much for all of FEMA's support, Cal OES's support, and the Army Corps' support. It's been a group effort. We couldn't have done it without you, so we really appreciate it. And the City of Clear Lake, you guys have been amazing at also aiding us with supporting us and getting us through this process. Environmental Health will continue to be available for any questions or concerns that may arise through the rest of the recovery process, so feel free to contact us. Thank you again.
Would all please get back up on the front? I think that's why we're here. So on October 8th, the fire started, and it was chaotic, at the very least. Seeing what remained after the fire seemed very stressful on how it was that we were going to recover and clean up. And here we are, we're almost done. We have a few properties left. I think it's amazing at how quickly we were able to mobilize, clean up, make everybody safe, be able to go home, and now we can really look at the rebuilding of Clear Lake. This is an amazing moment, and I want to thank everybody up here for their efforts to make that happen. I'm going to read this certificate of appreciation. An appreciation and gratitude from the Clear Lake City Council on behalf of the citizens of Clear Lake for debris management and cleanup. Whereas on October 8th, 2017, at 11:59 PM, a fire broke out near Highway 20 and Sulfur Bank Road. And whereas the fire quickly grew to 2,207 acres, causing evacuations of thousands of residents and threatening thousands of homes, destroying 166 structures in the City of Clear Lake and County of Lake. And whereas many agencies, including the County of Lake, FEMA, Cal OES, the Environmental Protection Agency, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers responded quickly to assist residents in recovering from the incident. Whereas, it is important to fully recognize the scale and scope of this emergency response because it demonstrates so clearly the skill, expertise, and proficiency these emergency responders hold. Let it be proclaimed that the Clear Lake City Council and the entire community does hereby acknowledge and sincerely thank those who assisted in the cleanup effort in response to the sulfur fire incident dated this 25th day of January 2018. Signed by myself, the mayor, but I'm sure we're all just as thankful as well for all of your help. I want to hand this out to County of Lake. FEMA. Cal OES. Thank you. Thank you. And the Army Corps of Engineering. Thank you. Thank you. I also want to provide a little hometown love. Public Works has been out making sure that mudslides, that all the houses that remain in the fire area are still protected from any further damage, helping with the roads, helping with the whole process. I want to make sure to highlight Public Works. The entire crew has been amazing. I want to also thank Joyce Overton, who has had to deal with the, there's the local assistance center, then it became the Recovery Assistance Center? The RAC? And I want to thank her for helping to ensure that the senior center was hospitable to all those who were there and to make sure that it stayed organized. So thank you, Joyce, always, for your efforts at the senior center as well. Thank you. I'm going to move on to item, business item number seven. Considering approval of purchase of real property located at 14141 Lakeshore Drive, Clear Lake, using low moderate income bond funds, Resolution Number 2018-04. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the City of Clear Lake has approximately $3 million in Series B bond funds that must be spent on low or moderate income housing-related projects. Staff has looked at various possibilities for spending that money, including, we looked at a student housing project at the community college. We looked at purchasing existing housing and turning that into low mod rentals. We looked at buying fixer-uppers. We looked at purchasing new modular homes and putting them on vacant land. We looked at purchasing existing low moderate income apartments. Staff believes that the best option is to purchase an existing low moderate income apartment. It would provide monthly cash flow from operations into enterprise fund. There was a mistake in our staff report that said general fund, but that would go into an enterprise fund. It would have a property, we do have property manager experience on staff. It would not require a project manager to renovate or build, so if we were to go in and do a fixer-upper, we're going to have to have some kind of project management experience. If we were to buy modulars, we're going to have to have project management experience. This going, purchasing an existing apartment would not create competition with home purchasers in a tight market, because when we looked at buying, okay, are we going to buy a house and turn that into a rental? Well, there's such a scarcity of housing, we didn't necessarily want to take those houses off the market for people who wanted to buy a house. Staff has identified the property at 14141 Lakeshore Drive as a property that has been on the market. The property is an eight-unit apartment with a, it's technically a two-bedroom home, but there's three bedrooms. It just doesn't have a closet, so it's not technically a bedroom. And one bath house. The purchase price was negotiated at $850,000 and will generate approximately $70,000 in gross rent. Our building inspector has thoroughly reviewed the property. They did a walkthrough. They created a punch list. The seller will be completing the punch list of minor fixes. I believe most of those have been done to date, and they will be replacing the roof, I believe, next week, weather permitting, but definitely prior to the close of escrow. The current owner is in escrow to purchase the Jewels Resort property in order to fix it up, and they're looking at that being corporate housing. Staff recommends that the City Council approve Resolution Number 2018-04 authorizing the purchase of the apartment building located at 14141 Lakeshore Drive, using up to $155,000 of Series B bond funds, and authorize the city manager to take whatever actions are necessary to finalize the purchase. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council before I open it up for the public? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Please step up to the podium. Thank you.
Ready?
Yes.
I'm Joan Shelley-Mingori. I own the property at 14109, 14107, and 14105 Lakeshore Drive. Shortly, I want to tell you a story. I hear you guys talk about tourism. The problem we don't have a lot of tourism is all the slum landlords that turn these resorts into permanent housing. A lot of them substandard. When we bought 14109, the first thing we did is we tore out four of these substandard permanent housing pieces of crap. I refused, probably that's why mine looks like it does, I refuse to rent substandard just to make money. And it's sad that you're taking a piece of property that was a resort motel that was converted to residential, and as a neighbor, we live with the people, with some of those people living there. The trash, the pulling up of my flowers, being burglarized, it's on and on and on. And frankly, if you want, you can buy mine. I have six cabins there. That's more six units. I'd be glad I have the same amount of frontage. You can have my property because I'll move out of the city, because I think I've had it. What are you doing? What are you doing? We want a resort community. We want a business community. I agree that we need to come up with some programs. I've often fought for getting programs for housing for our young kids so we can keep them in college here. A lot of kids leave Lake County because they have no place to live. Hood housing on Lakeshore Drive? All I'm going to say is shame on you.
Hi, I'm Bob Mingori. The other half, I'm glad she didn't hold anything back. You've got, just to go in another direction, you've got a lot of properties in town that, all over the place, that are substandard and not, through the neglect sometimes of the people that are living or renting in them, just because of the economics that they're living in, is retired people, seniors, people on low income that seem to, would benefit more from an uplift, a refurbishment of their property within the community that would in turn uplift the entire community around them. The, there's been discussion in the last year or two about whether there should even be a residential component to business development on Lakeshore Drive. Well, doing this, there certainly will be allowed by your own participation in that process of that very thing. I think it's valuable to have a residential component with commercial enterprises because it offers a sense of security. There is security in that, that you have somebody living near a business that may not be open, but somebody's still around during the night when you have problems. I just, I have a problem with just an apartment complex, just rentals right in the town that really contributes nothing to the downtown area. You made efforts in the last year to make a lot of improvements, cleaning up properties along the street and everything else. I hate to just kind of see it, the idea of, well, let's build this downtown area, let's get something going in terms of the economy. That's a separate subject, but I don't really think that a residential project down there is something you really want to be a part of. I can see where you want the money. You can get the cash flow from it. What is an enterprise fund, by the way? I just read general fund in the thing. Is it an enterprise, is that a special account that does something, or?
Yeah, it's a special account. Chris, you want to kind of explain?
Yeah, an enterprise fund acts like a fund, a business fund. It generates a profit, operates with receipts and expenses, generates a profit for the business. So most cities' enterprise funds would be sewer, water, where they're providing services to customers, as opposed to the general fund of the city, which generally provides the basic operating systems of the city.
Well, this fund then, the money that's generated from the rentals that goes into this fund, would then necessarily go back into, like, projects in terms of how it's spent, I would presume? It's not going to be for sewer or something else? It's restricted somewhat to the source from which it comes?
Yes, low and moderate income housing.
Okay, so it would go to that?
A certain portion of it can be transferred to the city in terms of administrative overhead.
Yeah, okay, that goes along with everything. But at least it would be going back into the same purpose and not just get stuffed into the general fund to be spent for whatever you feel like spending and all.
Correct.
That makes some sense. But just the same.
Mr. Mingori, and your time is up.
Did I have time?
Yes. Thank you, and thank you for that question. I had the exact same question as well.
I guess I'm going to express my concern too, is, and I've been working with you on homeless people and where we can buy and what we might be able to do. And one of the things we've been asked is not to put anything on the Lakeshore Corridor, and that is because of tourism, and that we want a face of this community to be on more upscale. So I think purchasing something that has been a resort and turning it into low-cost housing doesn't seem to meet or be consistent with your guidelines to others. Thank you.
Can I just clarify?
Please.
This property is currently a low-income apartment complex. We're not making any changes. It's not currently a resort. It hasn't been in quite a while.
If you would like to speak, please come up to the podium, and you have three minutes to speak. to speak.
My name is Louis Ching. I'm an investor, and I own 14541, 14525, the Sunflower Restaurant, and 14151. They are different property. And I found out it is very difficult to invest in Clear Lake, because the code enforcement rules and a lot of restriction, and I'm thinking about to pull on my investment. And in last five, six years, I have about four, in two years, about 30, 40 of my friends bought property here. I thought it's a good environment, lakefront, and beautiful. Somehow, the situation is pretty difficult because of the code enforcement, they give me a lot of citation, and I don't know how to clear it. Today, I'm here.
Can we come back to the property specifically we're speaking of?
Yeah, but I have a suggestion, though. We can make the Clear Lake very popular, and we need to create a job opportunity and make it easier for investors to come in to invest the money. We have nice property in the lakefront, and then we should have a fund, just like an enterprise fund, to help the owner to put the business in progress. Open it. The Sunflower Restaurant was closed the day I changed names, and the health department came in and closed it, shut it down. So, and I negotiate with the health department.
Excuse me, sir, could we go back again to the property that we're speaking of right here, and whether, what your opinion is of?
Yeah, my opinion is if you want to buy a property, my property is up for sale too, and maybe less price than you pay for that property, a lot less. I want to get out. I mean, if you don't mind, I just want to sell them. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wish to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Overton.
Okay, good points, everybody. So, one, the property is already there, it's been there for a long time, so one of my thoughts is, is if the city owned it, we could make sure that it's cleaned up and feasible. But one of my questions is, is, let's say, in the future, let's say, we do want to make businesses and stuff there on the Lake Shore Drive, and my wish would be to tear all that stuff out at some point in time, and have a nice boardwalk from one end to the other. What would happen with this property as far as selling it to do something like that? I mean, if we wanted to change it into a business, how would we do that, spending this bond money? How would that work? Because I think that's probably the future that I think we probably all see eventually, is having that all businesses, like you're talking about. But if we don't own the property, then we can never do that, we'd have to convince whoever owns it. My thought is, is if we own the property, then we have the advantage to start moving forward with some of these things like this. So, how would that happen?
Yeah, well, and maybe Chris, you can jump in as well, but my understanding is, for a certain period of time, those Series B bond funds have to be used to keep it as low and moderate housing. So, if we have it, I don't believe we can, you know, immediately transfer it in, and I don't think we can be the ones who actually do some kind of, convert it into some other type of housing or a resort place, but I do think over a period of time, we could sell it to somebody else, and then if they so choose to convert it into whatever they're gonna do, I don't believe we'd have the strings to restrict it from doing that. And that'd be my thought, but I don't know if our finance director has any other.
And then that money, I'm assuming would be used for low and moderate income housing somewhere else if we choose to do that. So, we could sell this property to an investor, not us being involved, but we could sell that property to an investor, take any money that comes out of that property and reinvest it into low and moderate income housing.
Exactly, yeah.
All right. So, because that's kind of what I, I mean, I think that is, you know, is one of the things I'd like to see eventually with this property, is if we purchase it, that it is something that we're looking to purchase these properties to be able to turn into, you know, businesses at some point in time and not keep them, but I want to make sure that the money's gonna be transferred over into doing low-income things. Also is, is can any of this money be loaned out to low-income people to fix up houses as they were talking about? You know, is there, can this money be a loan money, that we can loan to low-income people and have them fix their houses up, like was stated?
Well, the answer to that question is yes. We do have that available in terms of housing rehabilitation money. We could also do that. The practical problem with that approach is it depends on the size of the loans and the administrative cost of doing it. One of the suggestions I heard was, you know, making loans of, you know, from anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000. The problem with that is that the cost of administering a loan like that and tracking it is probably gonna exceed the cost of the loan. If the loans were larger, it might be okay. The other issue is, is what interest rate do we, you know, would we charge? Would we make it deferred loans? There are a lot of issues to go into it. The short answer to your question is yes, but we'd have to think about how we want to do that to make sure that we're not inefficiently using the money.
And how much is left over out of this Series B bond if we buy this property?
We have approximately $3 million currently in our Series B account, so it would be $3 million less than $855,000.
So, there are still possibilities to do other things with this. I just kind of want to make sure that other people know that this is out there. Let's see if that was it. So, I think that's my questions. Okay, thank you.
Is that your pen? Vice Mayor Harris.
So, I mean, there's an assumption here that we don't find the property located directly next to the lake being ideal for this, but the fact is, it is currently low to moderate income housing, and it has been for a long period of time. And we're faced with a situation in our community, especially with rising rent costs as a result of a lot of different things that have taken place in the last couple of years, that people are limited on their housing. So, I don't see any foreseeable future where we're going to have an abundance of affordable housing. So, given that situation, we have to take steps to look for options to keep affordable housing available, and I'm sure that city staff exhausted the other options that could have been available in our city that aren't necessarily right on the lake, but given the fact that this property has already taken up the role of housing, low to moderate income, I'm assuming that was the primary reason we focused on this property.
Yeah, there just aren't a lot of apartments that are really on the market right now, and most of them are kind of in that area.
So, that's why we focused on this particular property. So, I just want to bring that up, as to why a property right on Lake Shore Drive would have been the one that was decided upon, and I believe the way it was explained to all of us is that, you know, there was a lot of effort put into finding appropriate properties for a project like this, and this is the one that fit every criteria in the sense that it was already being utilized for that purpose. This just gives us the opportunity to have a say in the way that the appearance of the property is on a regular basis.
To add some additional background and to add on to what Councilmember Harris just said, the other part of this particular property is, it's a two-story apartment, it's 100% occupied currently. The person who bought it as an investment had put significant money into it, updating it, as I recall, with new kitchen facilities and paint, et cetera. It's looking very good, that's why we asked that it be looked at by our building inspector to make sure that it was of a, you know, at least standard. But we can't buy a property and fix it up, if I'm correct, without using prevailing wage. To buy a dilapidated or property that needs to be restored, we would have to pay prevailing wage to bring that property up to standard, as this property is, and that just isn't feasible. So, it's another reason why I was interested in seeing this project brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bennett.
I understand the concerns that have been brought up here. However, the property is being utilized and has been for some time, as it is. It will be overseen by the city, and it's already Section 8 approved. It will be managed by the city, our code enforcement, there will be a property manager from the city overseeing it. If there are problems in the area that are brought to the city, they will be addressed. It has been suggested in the community, well, why don't we buy individual properties and put people in it? We don't have the staff to oversee that. We don't have the money, as Councilman Perdok mentioned, to refurbish these houses. It prevailing wages with the money that is available to us. This is something that is already there, already occupied, will be under our auspices in our eyesight. If down the line, as Councilwoman pointed out, an opportunity comes up in the future to sell it, and it can be developed back into a resort, which it hasn't been since I've returned to the community in '96, I believe, I think we would jump at that opportunity. But right now, these funds need to be spent, and we will be overseeing the property, and I hope I can assure you that it will be done in a right way, and it's up to the neighbors to be our eyes and ears out there if it's not. And like the old radio show said, keep those cards and letters coming in, and we'll pay attention to whatever concerns there are.
Thank you. Councilmember Overton.
I just wanted to kind of put out there, because we keep saying prevailing wages, and can anybody tell me exactly what prevailing wage is? Because some people kind of get the idea, you know, $15 an hour, $20 an hour, but that's not so, because we fall under the San Francisco, basically, region. So, when they say prevailing wages, it's a lot higher, I think, than what people kind of get in their minds. So, can we kind of throw that out there? Does anybody know exactly, or approximately, what that is?
Well, I can't give you a specific wage, because each individual trade has its own prevailing wage.
But doesn't it normally go from like $25 an hour to?
Yeah, it can be a huge variety, it just depends on what the specific trade is. The easiest way to think about it in concept is union wages. So, whatever the union wage is for that particular trade, that's approximately what the prevailing wage would be.
So, it would cost us, I just kind of want people to realize that if we bought a house, per se, that a house that may only really be worth $100,000 could cost us not only that, but then also, we would have to probably cost us that much to fix it up. So, we're investing in public funds into something that we're really not getting the return on for the public, and our job up here is to make sure that any funding that we spend is giving the return to the city. The city is you guys. This is your money, and so we're trying to invest it the best way we can, and it has to be invested, and we can no longer just let it sit here and not invest it so that we get the return. And as this money comes in, then other things can be happening with other homes, such as loans and stuff like that to maybe low-income people, so there's other programs that can happen. Plus, then we have the opportunity to hopefully find an investor in the future that does want to invest. As we see, we do have investors coming into our town now. When that starts happening, other investors follow. So, in our, my hopes is, is that someday, we will have a beautiful boardwalk there, and that this property will become part of that. So, I just kind of wanted to let people know why it's really a big cost to just take one house and try to fix it up when it comes to having to pay the prevailing wage. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'll be honest, I really did not like this offer when I first looked at it. I had some very similar comments to a lot of the comments that were given today. Why aren't we looking for houses to rehabilitate what's inside our neighborhoods, so our neighborhoods can be better? And that still is a goal, but with $3 million, maybe we can do 10 houses, maybe. And at that point, the profit margin that you can make on a home versus the profit margin we're looking at for an apartment complex, this one-time money would disappear very fast. Here, we're looking to invest, make that money back, put it into an account that can be only reinvested in similar ways, so that once we have enough going for us, we can start doing the rehab that we're talking about, because the rehab that we all want to see is not gonna happen in the intensity that we need it to be, and we need to set our city up to be able to have a larger revenue that goes into a specific fund, like the B-bond money that we have now called the, what did you call it? It just changed, the Empire Fund?
Enterprise.
Enterprise, Empire Fund, sounds a lot larger. That's what we need to figure out, is how do we keep those revenue streams coming? $3 million spent on homes, there's not enough profit margin on it. This apartment is a large profit margin, and we need to keep going. This does not mean that this is how it stays forever. We're not creating a different situation than we have on Lake Shore. What we're doing, in fact, is we're setting ourselves up to be able to change the situation in the future. That's what I expect it to be. Whether we change the outline of what kind of businesses can happen on Lake Shore, saying only resorts when we sell it, then it might just have to become a resort. There's potential ways of looking at how we can make that happen. Right now, if we leave it alone, it will remain as is, and we will not benefit from it. This is a great way for us to benefit, and I think that it holds a lot of positive change for our housing stock in the future. It's not the perfect dream concept, but at the same time, I think we can benefit from doing this. If there's no more comments, maybe we take some action on this. I am very sorry, but our public comment is closed. Please feel free to stay after the meeting and talk to us. Sorry, and thank you.
You want me to make the motion? I'd like to make the motion to accept the Resolution Number 2018-04, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Clear Lake appropriating funds from the Series B bond issued by the former redevelopment agency for a contract to purchase property within the boundaries of the project area, and authorize the city manager to take all actions necessary to purchase property located at 14141 Lake Shore Drive, Clear Lake.
I have a first and a second from Councilmember Perdok. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Perdok?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Shinkarries, 5-0.
Thank you very much, and moving on to item number eight, I believe. Public hearing for confirmation of assessments for administrative penalties, and I will pass this on to Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce our code enforcement staff for this item.
The purpose of this hearing is to consider and act upon any and all protests of proposed assessments for recovery of the cost of administrative penalties for failure to abate public nuisances. Upon consideration of the evidence and testimony, council may grant the protest and revise the resolution to remove the assessments, or deny the protest and confirm the assessments as proposed, or modify, reduce the amount of assessments, and revise the resolution to reflect the modified assessments. The property owners were given notice of the violations and adequate time to voluntarily correct the violations. The property owners failed to abate public nuisance and on the said properties within Attached to the staff report is the proposed resolution confirming assessments, statement of expenses for the proposed assessments and supporting evidence. Staff recommends that council confirm all assessments as proposed. Property number one is 4054 Lansing Avenue. The property owner is Susanna Gage, and the administrative penalty assessment is $7,500.
I want to pause you right here. We had talked with the code enforcement team about calling up, is there anybody representing the property on 4054 Lansing Avenue? Okay, so go ahead and continue.
They're in violations of several CMC codes. They're in violations of several CMC codes. The first set of pictures were taken on six six two thousand seventeen. This home is also red-tagged. The current pictures were taken today, one twenty-five two thousand eighteen. I was not inside the home. I didn't have access today, so these are just outside of the house.
And if all council members are okay, we'll just go over all the properties, and then at the end, either make a decision as a bulk or pick out properties that we want to discuss. Any questions before we move on? Any questions from the public before we move on?
Yeah, I would like to ask for help to teach if you do property. I want to package the property together and offer fair.
No, what I'm saying is, if we all agree that we want to package them, or else if we want to pull a property, if you have a property on this list, sir, then we'll go ahead. We will discuss that property when it comes up. Thank you. Let's go ahead and move on to property number two, please.
Property number two is one four one seven zero Conocte Street. The owner is Brett Gilliam, and the penalty is five thousand dollars.
Is there a representative for this property here? Please keep going. Thank you.
This one is in violation of several CMC codes. The original pictures were taken on five twenty-four two thousand seventeen. This particular property is a vacant parcel. It's also red-tagged. The current pictures were taken today, one twenty-five two thousand eighteen.
Are there any questions for Ms. Veramonte from the council? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this property? Come on up.
This is a vacant parcel. What are we doing? I'm assuming people are living here?
Yes, there were people living there.
So I question to the council, because I, this is a real problem for our community, is to have people who are illegally living in our neighborhoods. This is where our bigger crime, I believe, comes from, and the assault on our citizens. So as you're looking at your, and I don't disagree with what's happening, but what do we do to actually support the citizens with years of this?
Thank you. Anybody else wish, anybody else wish to speak on this?
I just have a question. If there are animals on our property like this, what is the proper protocol to remove them? Or what is being done for the animals that are on properties that are vacant?
Ms. Veramonte, if you see animals, do you contact our animal control?
Yes, I also call the police department. Because nobody, you can't, in a red-tagged house, you can't have any children, animals. You can't be there unless at certain times. And obviously, they're not complying with those times to remove the violations.
Awesome.
Thank you for the question. Anybody else wish to speak on this? Bring him back. Let's go ahead and move on.
Property number three is one four five four one Lake Shore Drive. The property owners are Louis Ching and Julia Chan. The penalty assessment is seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
Are there representatives for this property here? Come on up to the podium, please. And Ms. Veramonte, go ahead and continue.
They are in violation of several CMC codes. The original pictures were taken on seven twenty-six two thousand sixteen. The current pictures were taken today, one twenty-five two thousand eighteen.
Is there any questions for Ms. Veramonte from the council?
Yeah, I would like to say the confusion about the coenforcement and the owner. They issue a citation, and then we fix it up and take care of the situation. And then we don't know, they will come out again or not, or sign off. There's no system here. And in two thousand sixteen, we already taking care of all these problems. And you have to understand, the people that we ran to these tenants, they are very, not a very perfect tenant. A lot of them repeatedly fixed, we, me and my partner, we spent about eighty thousand dollars a year to fix the properties, repeat property. We repeatedly fixed the same unit sometimes. The people, they will break the property and not paying you rent. And you, we called police department so many times, just like the picture you took here. The next-door neighbor, we called police so many times.
Twenty-eight times.
Twenty times.
Twenty-eight times.
And they don't let people go in to fix it, but they will communicate with coenforcement. And we go to court, try to evict them, they still there. We tried three times eviction. Each time we filed the paper, paid the fee, and the judge will grant them to stay and lower the rent. My rent is very low. I have to pay all the electricity, gas, everything. And their rent's only seven hundred. Now they're lowered to four hundred fifty. And my electrical bill for seven units, two thousand five hundred. And the water bill is about six, eight hundred dollars sometimes. Sometimes, one time it's eight, it's a thousand dollars. I mean, how could a landlord to survive? And they, they are so professional. They know what to talk to the judge, what to break and make them look good. So they were favorable. This is kind of things I want to speak with you guys. And then all of a sudden, the coenforcement come and find me a hundred dollars each item a day, and backdate for two thousand sixteen. That's ridiculous. How many times we fix it? We have photos after they, they inspect, we fix it, and then we took photos. But after that, they come back out again, and then after they damage it. What can we do? I mean, that's why we have photos here. The last time we fixed it is most recently. And then you can compare to the picture here, some photos. When you take the pictures, you take it from an angle. You take the most pile of stuff, you take picture. But you didn't step back and took a whole picture from the whole property. I mean, the place is improved a lot. If I spend that much money every year, I mean, what can I do for more? And then you find me for seventeen thousand five hundred? What would that do to me? And what would that do to the property? Maybe most likely, I can sell it to you for a dollar. Is that what you want me to do? Is that how you buy the property? Push the owner out? And I understand you also own a business for manage, manage other business, other property. Do you go out there and check their property as well? You're your clients. Do you check their property and then pull that, put a fine on them? I don't think so. I believe one time you asked me to manage my property too. That's the situation here. I mean, I'm an honest investor. I try my best. I take care of my tenants. Every time they call, we fix things. But when the fine comes, you backdate. I mean, I have no idea how this amount calculate, what day she start. And so many times, my manager called her to come out to inspect after we fixed it. We can't contact her. We can't find her. She didn't come out and do the job. And then now, today, all of a sudden, she go out there and find the time. It's the people put the stuff. I don't know who these people are. We cannot get them out. For some point, I don't know they are here, know each other what. I mean, we have a difficult time to do business here. I just need some help. I mean, if you want me clean up tomorrow, we clean up again. But one week later, you go back and see, you will clean, you will see that again.
The problem also is, as a manager here, the judge orders me, this is all, this one unit, this is all pictures of one unit, the very end, number seven. That's all that, the little areas, is that all the area. They have tons and tons of people there. They have too many people living in the apartment, which is why I evicted them, but I cannot get them out. The judge, they go and they have, they know the laws very, very well. They're professionals at this. They're like professionals. They tie it up for months and months and months for a little tiny thing. And in that meantime, I'm not allowed to contact them, because they're the, we're now in opposing. So any contact, and I get in trouble. And so that's when they do this kind of stuff. I can't go tell them to clean it up, because I'm not allowed to have contact with them. So this is what happens in the time of litigation. They destroy their part, the whole back area. And then when I get one of them out, they switch over to another person. They have a different, same, at the same address, they're now squatting. So they go, all the people, they know this very system very well and tie it all up. And they're very difficult. All the other tenants besides number seven all live there, they're all very happy. And they, except for with number seven. They have drug people come in and out all the time. They have, they've called the police many times. They're noisy and loud. The police don't even come, come out no more. I call them, ask them, please come deal with these people, and they say no. And they're so sick of coming to deal with them, same thing over and over and over. And so they get angry at me for having to call them so much, but I don't know what else I can do. But if I'm not supposed to call them, what can I do? And then the judge won't let them out. I say, Judge, I don't understand, sir. We're all standing here and agreeing that you, you're telling me that you understand that they're not paying rent, because they agreed they're not paying rent. And how can they stay for some little, a little, maybe a nuance in some law that I don't know, because they're professionals, and they end up tying you up? That is the situation. I have the pictures here of all the other property. We have gone all the other things that they ask. They say more, I'm more. They say paint, I paint. And all the things they asked me to do, that's all it's the same.
That is a very good, good answer. One thing is just like the paint, paint the building. The coenforcement asked us to paint. I painted all white. And then they told me to paint it again in beige, and we painted again in short period of time. What can we do? We do everything they want us to do. And you still give me seventeen thousand five hundred dollars fine? Just take the property then. I mean, I try my best. I mean, and the jurisdiction system doesn't help us. And in the officer, I have to give a lot of credit to officers. We call them, they're very professional, can come out, help a lot. But get to the point, they come out, they cannot do anything. These are professional people. We need to work with them. Judge, I have property in Vegas. If this property has same problem, three days, I get them out. In here, seven months now, I didn't get a penny of the rent. They still damaging my property. They don't let us go in and fix it. I don't know what's wrong in this city, you know, that we need to do something about it. And not just pushing fine on me. You give me a fine, it doesn't help anything.
Is there any questions? Vice Mayor Harris?
I'd like an extension if nothing else, sir, please.
So a couple of questions for you about the property. How long have you been the owner of this property?
About four, five years.
Okay. Well, I would say that in my, in my personal history, I pass this property on a daily basis, and many times a day. And I would say that it has been blighted pretty consistently for that entire time, and then some. So my concern here is that as a business entity, which is that, that's how you're operating. You're operating as an investment. You purchased a piece of property, which you're renting now for a profit. That's the idea anyways, right? Okay. As a business entity, you understand that it comes with a certain element of liability. So you're taking on a piece of property with the hopes of making a profit. But I think what we're coming down to here is the lack of investment, initial investment, in order to obtain the correct clientele to get what you were after. So not trying to explain to you how to operate a business, but what I will tell you is that you're clearly not renting to the correct people if you're trying to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish. We have a magnitude of lakefront rentals that do quite well. A lot of them are very short-term rentals, where we have, you know, a couple of days or a weekend or a week, or whatever the case may be. You have a monthly rental scenario. But I will say that you obviously understand that by purchasing, purchasing a piece of property, I assume your initial intentions were to have a nice, clean environment, rented to good folks and to be consistently collecting rent. But I don't believe I have ever seen any real dramatic improvement on the property. So you have obtained a property, and in the time you've obtained the property, you have attempted to make an income on the property. But I didn't see any real initial investment or any real serious investment throughout the entire time, in the last five years, that is. So for me, from my perspective, it's a problem. That is a problem throughout our entire community. When somebody buys a piece of property with the only intention of making money, and they don't put any money back into it, and don't invest back into it, this is what we see happen, unfortunately. So that's my opinion of what's taking place here. But you understand, you, all these things that you're explaining to us, these troubles you're dealing with, you're not being represented properly, obviously, in court, because you should be able to get somebody out in less than seven months. Especially if you did everything correctly, and you were taking care of your tenant the way you should have been. So I'm just trying to figure out where, where it would ever end up in a situation where it's taking seven months to evict somebody. You have to, you have to dig deeper here. There's a, there's a bigger problem.
If this is the old judge, the old judge retired several months ago. They were out. But now we have a new judge here. The judge is very favored to the tenants. I mean, I'm not kidding you. One of the tenant sue me back for, in small claim, court us for seventeen thousand dollars. And the judgment came out, say, I have to pay him this and that, because of seven months he didn't pay me rent. And the judgment came out, say, I have to pay him this and that because of seven months he didn't pay me rent. So I didn't owe him money. I looked at the judgment and say, wow, this, this is funny. This guy not paying rent and live there for free and, and claim all these emotion things. And then he will win something. This bothers me and I, I've...
Once again, I'm just going to reiterate, we're sticking to the, the concept here of why, why we're talking about this. Your ability to collect rent from your clients, once again, comes back to your own ability to obtain a client. So I just want to make sure that's clear. That's a completely sub-issue, and that's between you and the court. But what we're dealing with... We're talking about the blighted...
Clean up. Maybe you just drive by, you didn't see the, how much work we did. We have received, we, we done so many times. People continue coming here and take this place as a dumpster. For some reason, we don't know, it's mystery. They will come in and just dump the stuff here and then go.
So I'm going to pause, I'm going to pause you for a second. Councilmember, you had something to say?
I sympathize with landlords totally, especially when they go into court and try to evict somebody. It always seems to work towards the favor of the tenants. First of all, the police coming out, it's a civil matter. The police do not deal in that. They, I'm sure they've told you that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I look at those photos. There's one right there. And if we go back through there, if I were a tenant living in that squalor and took photos into the court where you're trying to evict me, I guarantee I would stay there rent-free. The judge would let me. Electrical outlets that are wrong. Did I see a fire alarm that's not working? Numerous, numerous violations of a probably health and safety code, building violations and everything else. I guarantee I could live there. Any judge would let me. I don't care how liberal they are or how conservative they are, would let me live there for free. That's, I'm sorry. That's despicable. Maybe, excuse me, maybe you've put money into it and maybe they tear it down. But you know, you've got a phone. Every time you make an improvement, you take a picture, take that in the court and say, Your Honor, this is the improvement I made. This is where they've destroyed it. Make that work to your favor. But even just the outside of it, are you the property manager?
Yes, sir. I go there.
Didn't get it cleaned up?
I, I go there.
Spend that, spend that little amount of money because that is a pigsty when the code enforcement went out there. Don't blame code enforcement. They're just doing their job. But I could win a case against you in small claims court.
You see, you see what I mean, sir? So if you, if we tell them to clean up their stuff and they don't, so I can't, I can't beat them up and make them. I call the police, the police come out, and the police can't do anything because it's a civil matter. So then we have this, 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 what do I do?
It's a civil matter. Their hands are tied.
So what, exactly. So what I'm saying is, so what is, what is the enforcement? How, how, how can I make them not put, dump their trash there? I pick it up every time they dump it, pick it up every time they dump it.
Well, I suggest you get some better legal representation or whatever because what I see right there is not a tenant problem. All that illegal wiring and all that to cover up a hole in here?
That's cable, sir. That's cable.
What's the infestation that goes in, inside there?
Oh, this is PG&E wires. It's not our wire. This is a tree branches. I mean, if it's unsafe, PG&E won't provide power to... The picture is in the angle. This is the unit has problem.
It's the same unit. Yes, it's all the same unit.
My, what I'm trying to say is, you give me the time today.
We'll fix it.
Again, we fix it. We tried to have a police escort us to go over there. We clean up because he cannot go over there. And I've been there a couple of times. I have them to move. Used to be have tents over there. These people, they let their friends live in the tent. And now they don't have a tent. They just leave the stuff over there. Two weeks ago, I just dumped a big load truck in the, in the, in the, with a trailer, 14 feet trailer, all pack up and dump it. Yeah, almost 2,000 pounds. And now you look at it, this today is already like that. What can I do?
So, sir, I, I have two suggestions for you. And then we need to, to move forward and make a decision on what was going to happen. Number one, if you get this cleaned up and you contact our code enforcement, there's the potential to really drop the price on what you see. Right now, 17,500, we can drop that down. I don't remember the specific percentage. I want to say drop it down 90%. So you only pay 10% of that fine if you get it cleaned up within 30 days. So you go ahead and do what you say you're going to do. Go ahead and clean it up. Take pictures, contact our code enforcement, have them come by and inspect it. And if it's cleaned up the way that it's spelled out that you need to clean it up, then you have the chance to bring down the fine. Number two, do you have a fence that fences your property? Because every home that I've ever been in, I first fenced it off because people want to come into your yard without your knowledge, without you wanting them to, and they will do whatever they want. Do you have a fence around your yard?
This doesn't have a fence. This property is...
It would really help you if you had a fence.
It's a one building with four units. They all wall to wall, connect each other. And there's no fence over there. But if you think I can put up a fence, I can do that. That's not a problem.
I'm saying, secure your property, sir. That way, nobody can come and dump in your backyard. If, if, if this appeared in a single day or a couple of days after you cleaned it up, I'm believing somebody's just coming back with their truck and dumping in your property. Fence your yard. Secure your yard. If you own a piece of property, it is up to you to secure your property to not have these things happen. When I live in an area and somebody throws a soda can in my yard because they're walking by and they don't care about their trash, I have to pick up that soda can. If somebody's going to dump a whole trailer full, I have to pick up that trailer full. It sucks. But it's my property and I need to be responsible for it. So please, take those suggestions. And, and at this point, I think we've heard enough to be able to make a decision. Please clean it up, contact code enforcement, drop that price so you do not have to pay the full amount for the fine.
If we contact the code enforcement? Code enforcement, do they come out right away or because we contact them, they don't, very...
And sir, I, I will give you another suggestion. Call them by phone and also email them so you can prove, this is when I emailed you. Maybe she wasn't able to come out, but at least you can prove that you contacted them to have them come out. Please do so. She will contact you. Or they will contact you.
I, I believe even 10% is quite heavy for me because each month I'm losing about 10,000 dollars on this property and the other property.
And at, at this point...
I'm not making money. On every month, I'm losing money in here.
And at this point, your, your loss is, is due to civil matters and that, that's, that's not something that we can resolve for you. This is affecting our community and your neighbors as well as everyone that passes by on their boats and happens to see it. And this is, this is something that we are trying to clean up so that we can clean the image of Clear Lake. So please work with us. I don't want to see you get fined again. But right now, we're here because no action has been taken to get to the point where we feel that there was a solution.
I would like to, to keep this... Yeah, you can keep this to see how much improvement we did.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Any other questions before they sit down? Do we go ahead and want to move forward to property number four, I believe?
Property number four is 3634 Redwood Street. The owner is Wilma Sanchez, and the assessment penalty is 7,500.
Is there a representative for this property here?
She's actually deceased.
It was confirmed today that she was deceased.
Okay. And no other representative?
This property is in violation of several CMCs and is also red-tagged.
Are there any questions from the council?
Have we made contact with the next of kin?
You know, I, I did have contact at one point, but I haven't heard from them in several, several months.
So they are aware of the situation?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe there was somebody that's, is kind of staying there that used to take care of her years ago. I think he's kind of found his way back there. Is he still there?
I haven't seen him, and I know which gentleman you're talking about. But there are very, there are a lot of other transient people that I know the police department has gone and pulled several out at a time. There's been up to five and six people staying in there. This is, this house is a problem.
Yeah, it's obviously gotten really bad because she would never, she didn't have it this way. So I've been in this house. So, yeah, we need to do something with that.
Anybody from the public that would like to speak on this property? All right, bringing it back to the council, let's go ahead and move on to property number five.
Property number five is 6352 James Street. The owner is Stanley King, and the penalty is 2,500 dollars.
Is there a representative for this property here? All right, let's go ahead and listen to the code enforcement report, and then we'll let you speak.
This property is in violation of a couple of CMCs.
Can you explain the CMCs?
Yes, sir. It's actually a vacant parcel that is not permitted to have any items on it.
Why?
According to the way the CMCs were written.
According to me...
Can we, can we first listen to the report from code enforcement, and then we'll let you speak? Thank you.
The original pictures were taken on 5/6/2017. And it's that green cargo container and the truck. The origin, the current picture was taken today, 1/25/2018.
You're calling it blight and you're calling it a nuisance. I live on a dead-end street. My grandmother's had that property since 1960. They broke ground in '58. We found a picture of a baby in a bucket. I'm sure it was my cousin born in 1958. My grandmother's been parking her, her motorhome, her travel trailer, her '58 Comanche, her '72 Duster, and her boat on that property since 1960. And there was another little garden shed just on the others, on the border of the, the property. So I lifted that up and put it in the backyard that was on a slab where the picnic table used to be. I went down to the city long before I started working on the house because I bought my grandmother's house. So I had to put a roof. I had to remodel bathrooms. I put a 200 amp. I've done nothing but spend money on my property. And all I've been is harassed by the city. I feel I've been harassed. That is not blight. That is not a nuisance. And you talked about securing your property. My, my yard, my house has been burglarized. My yard gets picked apart. I've had two bicycles stolen. One of them was retrieved from 60, I think it's 6262, old, old 53. And one of my bicycles was retrieved from the shed where they had, there, I'm pretty sure these guys were... Because the property comes up as a foreclosed property. Now, you had a couple of old men that lived a few trailers down, and they moved into that thing. You know, so now they're gone. You know, the thing caught on fire. It was a big mess. I seen Lee and Tina out there one day. It's like, what, what's going on? I mean, what's the problem? I live on a dead-end street, you know? And I have to secure my stuff because it's going to get stolen. You know, like you say, the police come out, their hands are tied. Everything is circumstantial evidence. There's nothing they can do. They don't want to take fingerprints, you know? So I have, I have to secure my stuff somewhere. My grandmother traded that, traded a boat for that lot years ago in the 60s. So, you know, I'm starting to regret it. I'm starting to regret purchasing my grandmother's property. You know, I'm trying to fall in love with Clear Lake. It, I'm trying to make it here. But if I'm going to be harassed for this, if that is blight and that's a nuisance... I mean, you've obviously know what blight and a nuisance are because you've showed plenty of pictures. It's clean. My yard is clean. All I do is try to keep it clean. I want to be left alone. And there's another thing I want to, I don't know if this is the place to do it. I know you guys are going to be doing some strong-arm garbage service now. I've been, I've been recycling for about 20 years now. I make compost. I return all my bottles and cans.
That, that is a different topic, sir. If you want to talk about the garbage, you had the opportunity during public comment at the beginning of the meeting. If you want to come back to a different...
I'm not sure how this all works. I, I, I had to take a special day off today or get my schedule switched so I could be here on a Thursday at 6 o'clock. I know that that's when these meetings are. I'd love to be down here a lot more often. I'd like to be participating, you know, in cleaning up Clear Lake. We came here when I was a kid, and every single motel, hotel, motel...
Let's focus on, let's focus on the property itself.
Vacant, well, or no vacancy. Well, here we are. You know, it's painted the same color as my house. I was told, so getting back to the story, before I put a roof on my house, before I rebuilt both bathrooms, before I put a 200 amp panel and a roof and everything else, I went to the city to find out what exactly I can do with that little piece of property. It's only 1,700 square feet. You need 3,000 square feet to build. So they let me know that. I said, well, what can I do? Well, you can do anything as long as it's not a permanent structure. So I was under the assumption that I could put a shed, I could put a carport, I could put blacktop because that's all not a permanent structure. But all of a sudden, I get a notice on my, on my container. And the thing that really gets me is the neighbor, they had one parked about 10 feet and a little further back, and they didn't have a notice on their container. So I, and, and the, the original complaint that was on my container was addressed to my neighbor's brother with the, the address. There's actually a lot between, between my container and his, his car. There's another lot in there. And so I asked if they could explain this to me. It's not my name. It's not my address. There's another one 10 feet away, and he doesn't have a, he doesn't have a complaint. Well, then I found out, they, they came right out and put a notice on his door, I guess. So it was his brother's container. He told his brother, if there's ever a problem, you got to move it, and that's what they did. I hated to see it go because, you know...
So we have a few questions up here. I'm going to pause for a second to Vice Mayor Harris.
Yeah, Tina, if I could just have you explain the CMC violations in their, their entirety. What do they mean? And then what, what is the correct, corrective action?
Well, according to the CMC, and this gentleman has also come in and spoken with myself and Julie Burrow, the planner, because if there was something that I didn't know, that her expertise might maybe have found a way around it due to zoning and things like that. And she's also agreed with me that, no, it can't be there because according to our CMC code, the vacant parcel is just that, vacant.
Right.
It's adjacent to my house. I live across the street.
Just a moment, sir. So just to clarify then, because it's a vacant parcel and it's not combined with a structure, a parcel with a structure on it, nothing can be on that parcel period, so that parcel has to be cleared regardless?
Correct. And also, we are not allowing the cargo containers. I've cited several people throughout the city or my area to get rid of the cargo containers because they are considered a blight unless certain zoning regulations like commercial are allowing it. And this particular lot does not allow for that. That's why I've also had him connect with Julie because she has a lot more knowledge in that area than I do.
you know, I've been there six years, they've graded the road twice, both times they skipped my street, you know? And when, it's just, I just want to be left alone. We've been there since 1960. Never, never been a problem. There's never been a notice on my other, on the other shed that was out there. And all of a sudden, and, and one of the reasons I brought it in is because I did see them all over the, all over town. So, you know, no problem. And then after, after I got the notice, I had noticed that a few of them across from Mendo Mill, there's been some that have been moved. But this is just not blight. This is painted the same color as my house. And then Julie, since you brought her up, I wasn't going to bring her up, she's like, well, isn't there a vacant lot right next door to you that you can buy? I'm like, oh, well, first of all, I don't know that the lot next to me is for sale, and if it is, I would like to repurchase it. And I'm, I'm like, so you're telling me that I could move that container 20 feet across the street and next door, and everything's okay now? It's, they're, they're picking on me. I'm being singled out. This is not right.
One, one second, just to finish what I'm saying here. You have clearly explained that you have noticed other shipping containers throughout the city that have been removed.
Yep, yeah.
So what, what aspect of that indicates to...
House, 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 and I had this thing sitting in my driveway.
I just, I just want to reiterate that you...
Then it seems to me that somebody's complaining, and there is nobody complaining. I've talked to all my neighbors. I talked to all my neighbors before I brought this thing in and asked them, hey, if I, you know, oh, no, Stan, that's your property, do whatever you want. That's, that's the opinion of all my neighbors.
It really, it really is a violation. Do you understand?
Says who? But why is it a violation?
As she just explained.
It's a shed. It's got two roll-up doors on it, you know, they, they didn't take the picture on the other side.
Sir, I have another council member with coming. Councilmember Overton.
Okay, is this particular lot where this is, is this connected to your property in any way, shape, or form?
It's directly across the street.
It's across the street, so it's not next to you in any way?
No, it's right across the street.
So, I, I just wanted to clarify that, so...
But what difference does it make if, if it's across the street?
There is no difference.
Or next door?
Well, the only difference would be was that if you merged it and then built a building around it, you would be able to say that it was aesthetically...
They've already made me merge my property. I had two lots, they made me merge them. I've had to do the title search three times at 400 bucks a pop.
So, sir, we, we've heard your testimony. You know that a storage of that size is not legal within our municipal code. I believe our limit is 12 by 10 shed is, is legal, but not on a vacant lot. A vacant lot is, needs to be developed before anything else...
I can't develop it. I have 1,700 square feet. I even asked a neighbor if he had sliced off 1,300 square feet.
And so...
He doesn't want to sell. He doesn't want to get involved. He don't want to be a part of any of it.
And at this point, the code violation is storing anything, whether it's a vehicle or a storage bin, on a vacant lot. And this is what we're discussing today.
So if I put a fence around it, does that change anything?
It's still a vacant, it's still a vacant lot.
What's going to make this okay? There has to be a compromise here somewhere. You know, I live on a dead-end street. There's, there's two houses on my street.
And, and, sir...
And a commercial, a commercial wood shop or whatever the guy's doing over there.
And, and we've heard you say that on multiple occasions, so we definitely have heard you, that you are at the end of a street. However, municipal code is still states that a storage...
What about a variance? What's a variance about? Because when I had the architect draw up my plans for my house, he said, you know, the, the city can't tell you that you can't use your property. You, you'll have to get in a variance. That's when Julie, who I wasn't going to bring up here, slams down the piece of paper and says, that's $500.
Okay, that...
Ooh, okay. So I'm afraid to go to the city. I'm afraid to go down this, this, you know, I, it's never a good experience. It's always confrontational.
All right, sir, we, we've, we've heard enough from you. We, we've heard your testimony. Thank you very much. Is there any other questions here?
So do I get the 10% fine like the other guy?
Everybody does.
So...
If you find yourself a storage facility, which we have a lot of...
I'm not moving it. I have no intention of moving it. So that's why I'm here to try to find out what we can do to remedy this. There has to be a, a compromise, a variance. I don't know the legal terms, but that is bothering nobody. Nobody. Nobody's complained.
Thank you very much, sir.
So where do we go from here? What's...
We're going to move on to property number six and then come back to make a decision on what we're doing on all these properties.
Thank you for your time.
Ms. Veramonte, is this still yours, or are we moving on to Mr. Felder?
Okay, property number six, 3786 Oak Avenue. The owner is Victoria Zelman. Administrative penalty assessment, 7,500. It had numerous CMC violations. Original pictures were taken on 823, 2016. This is a house that wasn't finished constructing. You can see, this is the deck. I believe they have some plywood up there. This is underneath the house. There was a travel trailer. I believe it was removed. Current pictures were captured today. Oh, no. This is the other side of the deck. You can see some of the material still in packaging up on the right corner. This is the other side of the house. It hasn't been finished with the siding. And this is the picture of the front.
And I'm sorry, I didn't ask if there was anybody here to represent this property. Okay, any questions for Mr. Felder? I do have a question. When did construction originally start on this?
I'm not sure. When I, when I took, when I took the case, it was like this, I believe, Lee Lambert says it was prior to 2009.
It's been like this for quite a while?
Yes. I did talk to Mrs. Zelman in April of this year, or of last year, excuse me. She called and said that she would be getting a loan, and she would start the cleanup and get the permits to finish. She did come. They removed the travel trailer and a few other things, but that was it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this property? All right, moving on to property number seven.
Okay, property number seven is 1589020th Avenue. The owner is Diane Fairside. Administrative penalty is 2,500. The original pictures were captured on 912, 2016. Again, this was another cargo container. Lots of scrap metal all around. The current picture, current pictures were taken today. The one cargo container was moved, and a travel trailer was in there now, and then they brought in another cargo container, and it's in the right-of-way. And he told me, when I did talk to the gentleman last year, he said he couldn't move it because of the rain, and it still stayed there all year.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Felder from the council? Anybody here wish to speak on this property? All right, moving on to number eight.
Property number eight, 1621634th Avenue. The owner is Lanny Ernest and Mary Ernest, and the administrative penalty was 5,000.
Is there anybody here to represent this property? All right.
Cited for several CMC violations. The original pictures were captured on February 2nd, 2017. Current pictures were taken today. Actually, it was also red-tagged, I believe, two weeks ago.
Any questions for Mr. Felder on this property? Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this property? All right, bringing it back to council and seeing what action we take.
First, do we need to close the public hearing?
Please.
Make a motion to close?
A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Any specific property that we would like to discuss, or do we want to take action on all properties?
Mr. Mayor, can I add something?
Absolutely, please.
Regarding cargo containers in residential areas, they're not a permitted or a conditional use. Those are for industrial areas only. I have the code in front of me. It's 10-2, 18-2.201.
So you're saying no variance is allowed for cargo containers?
They can apply for a variance, but it's not a permitted or conditional use.
Okay, thank you.
So we close the public hearing at this moment? If you'd like to speak to him afterwards? After the meeting, if you'd like to talk to him, please. Please.
Well, I'd just like to, again, point out, the city took a big hit in 2008 with the real estate bubble when it collapsed, and we had to, the city council at that time had to suspend all code enforcement operations and lay people off. And since that time, pretty much people started doing whatever they wanted. It wasn't until a couple of years ago when we were able to find the funding to rehire and reinstitute code enforcement that we've been trying to clean these, some of these properties up. Everything from blue tarp roofs to cargo containers to other things that you simply don't see in other cities. We're operating on the same CMCs that most city jurisdictions use, and we're just, again, trying to clean up the city best we can, property by property. And that's what you're seeing here tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2018-03, a resolution of the City Council of City Clear Lake confirming special assessments consisting of administrating, administrative penalties for the failure to abate public nuisances and approve lien against real properties in accordance with Sections 1-5, 1-9, 10-1.6, 10-1.7, 10-1.9, 10-1.12, 10-2.2B, 10-2.4, 10-2.5, 10-2.6, 10-2.7, 10-2.8, 10-3.1, 10-3.3, 10-5, and 10-5.6 of the Clear Lake Municipal Code.
I have a, I have a motion in a second from Mr. Bennett. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Purdock?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
5-0, Kerry's?
And we're going to take a 10-minute break. We will reconvene at 7:55.
Yeah, we just got...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2018-03, a resolution of the City Council of Clear Lake confirming special assessments consisting of administrative penalties for the failure to abate public nuisances and approve lien against real properties in accordance with Sections 1-5, 1-9, 10-1.6, 10-1.7, 10-1.9, 10-1.12, 10-2.2B, 10-2.4, 10-2.5, 10-2.6, 10-2.7, 10-2.8, 10-3.1, 10-3.3, 10-5, and 10-5.6 of the Clear Lake's municipal code.
I have a motion in a second from Mr. Bennett. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Perdok?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Five zero, Carries?
And we're going to take a 10-minute break. We will reconvene at 7:55.
Yeah, we just got them.[320.33]
And the reason that's significant is on an annual basis, that means that our debt payment on the bonds annually will be reduced by anywhere from one hundred and twenty-five thousand to one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars a year. Those funds will accrue to the benefit of not only the city of Clear Lake, but the other taxing agencies that contributed to the tax increment of the redevelopment agency. That would include the schools, the fire district, the county, vector control, and a series of other entities. So I just wanted to point that out to you because as we look at the ROPS, what we're doing is we're approving the bond payments for fiscal year 2019, which is 2018 and 2019. We haven't even adopted our budget yet for that year, so we have to kind of look in the future about what the payments are going to be. Fortunately, we know exactly what the bond payments are, and we estimate what we think our operating expenses are going to be for the successor agency during that time. The other thing that we have to do during that time period is estimate what we believe that the tax increment, that's going to be the revenue to the successor agency is going to be during that time period. You'll remember after 2008, there was the Great Depression or Recession, and property tax values declined for a number of years, which was quite concerning to our area because as the tax revenues, property tax revenues declined, it impacted our ability, or the successor agency's ability, to potentially pay the bonds. Those decreases have now started to recover. Over the past couple of years, we've increased by a percent and a percent and a half, and I have projected in our estimate that it will probably increase another percent each of the following years. I'm hoping that it's going to be larger, but I do it only at a percent, just to be conservative, because if you overestimate, they don't give you the, you know, they don't give you the extra in case you're wrong. So, the bottom line is, is that the residual that will be distributed out to the taxing agencies after they pay their balance, the amount that we're entitled to under our ROPS, last year, in the current year, was estimated to be about three thousand dollars. Because of this refinancing, we estimate that it will be about one hundred and ten thousand in the next, in the next ROPS year, which would be eighteen nineteen, which is what you're approving. This morning, the Oversight Board approved the schedule, and I would ask that the successor agency approve it as well and adopt Resolution SA two thousand seventeen dash oh one. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Becknell. Do we have any questions for our staff? Is there anybody from the public that would wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, bringing it back to council for further discussion or action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution Number SA two zero one eight dash zero one, authorizing submission of the ROPS fiscal year eighteen nineteen for July one, twenty eighteen through June thirty, twenty nineteen, and confirm the action of the Oversight Board.
Second?
Got a motion and a second by Vice Mayor Harris. Do I need a roll call, or could we just, let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Perdok?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you. Five zero, Kerry's?
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number ten. Thank you, everybody, for being patient. I know there's a large crowd here for this item tonight. Discussion on creating an animal control department ad hoc committee. Mr. Folsom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as a city, we've used ad hoc committees in the past very successfully to provide citizen input on various projects, including the marijuana ordinances and the special road tax that we did, that otherwise known as Measure V. Animal control is an issue that has been receiving a large number of complaints in the city. The creation of an ad hoc committee to provide citizen input into the proposed new animal control facility may be of help in disseminating information about how the city is working on this issue. We just see that this is possibly a good way to have citizen interaction, find out more about what we're doing, and get good input from them as to the direction we should be going. And that concludes my report.
Any questions from council or comments?
How are we planning on, and how many are you planning on, and can we have actually a committee and not open, except for when invitation by the committee for public? Because I know that the marijuana one kind of got out of control, and I don't think that's what the ad hoc committee is, not open to the public per se. Somebody wants to speak, I think they need to apply to speak at the meeting. I'm not denying anybody any, you know, if it's necessary for them to speak, but I think we need to start getting a little more control over our ad hoc committees. They tend to get a little too carried away, so.
Yeah, this is completely up to you guys for discussion. You don't have to have one if we don't want to have one, or we can have one, and it's whoever, how many you all want.
Five or seven? Nine?
I would say nine at the very most. And I just want to say that we just had another ad hoc committee for our marijuana today with quite a few members, and it was very functional, very organized. I think as long as we organize all ad hoc committees in a similar way, where there's no shouting and no, just listen to me, we can have a very constructive discussion on where to go and listen to everybody's input.
Yep, it comes down to respect and respecting other people's opinions.
I would like to see two councilmembers on there. Obviously, our police departments, since they are in charge of animal control. I would love to see some of our partners that we're working with right now, also at the table, to let us know how to, they can better serve us and how we can better serve them, for their services to be more efficient and helpful for us. I know that, actually, I guess I'm just going to open it up to the public and let the people that are here talk. So, I'll open it up to the public, and we'll be back. Please come to the podium.
I think it's wonderful, because let me tell you something. This city has to take care of itself. All these people, there's nothing but negative stuff going on, and everything gets blown out of proportion. So if we can all work together, you know, because we have to care about the city and the animals that are here, and we have so many, it's gotten so out of hand, and I think it'd be great if we have a committee.
Thank you.
I want to thank you guys. I have to say, I want to thank you really, because this is what we need, because it's not good, everybody fighting against one another, because what do you accomplish? Nothing. So if we can all get together, we can have a wonderful animal control. It's not going to happen overnight like everybody thinks. It's going to take time. It's going to take time, but I know that we can achieve it. So, you know, I hope you guys really think about it. I know that I have, because I had wonderful people that I talked to, and I'm not going to say who, but I, you know, I want to thank you guys. Okay? Thank you.
I think you know who I am, but being in the animal control field in the past, I'm working full-time now, but not in animal control. I think that I can contribute ideas and paperwork and how to run a shelter, but I am not a citizen of Clear Lake. So, you know, it's up to you if you want me to contribute to this. I will be behind the scenes. I won't be leaving until I know there's a shelter and that it's run right, but I'm just offering to help out.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie Sally. I had a veterinary clinic here in Clear Lake for many years, and I think most of you already know me. And I have been volunteering with the animal control for the last couple of months, trying to kind of help get their veterinary side of things figured out a little bit, help them get some protocols and things in. And I do, you know, attending the meetings that we have with the animal control officers on a pretty much weekly basis, I can see that there's been a tremendous amount of improvement. And I know that there has been at least a little bit of improvement in the Facebook things that are being said out there, but I do think that having an ad hoc committee would allow some more transparency, let the citizens have a little bit more input perhaps, and appreciate the difficulties that animal control has.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Leonard, City of Clear Lake, I have a question. The sign says the city has successfully used the ad hoc committees to get citizen input. When I've asked about ad hoc committees, I've been told they aren't public. It has to be one or the other, they're not going to get public input if the public can't go to something. Are they public or they're not public?
Typically, they're not public, but we do invite citizens at large to be a part of the.
But you're not getting citizen input, you're getting who you invite in. I'm just, you know, don't want people to have the wrong idea and think they can come to something that they're not welcome at.
Thank you for the clarification. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Bring it back to council. Councilmember Overton? No? No? Council, or Vice Mayor Harris?
And everybody maintain a positive and well-rounded influence during the entire thing, so that we can actually enact change and enact benefit to our community. So, I'm very excited about this ad hoc. I think this is a great thing for our community. This has been an ongoing issue. This is probably one of the most vocal things I hear in our community, is that we have multiple problems with animals running. I appreciate everybody who's excited about the concept here, and I was handed a stack of people who were very interested in being on the ad hoc committee, and I'll be passing that forward to you. Good. Thank you.
So I was hoping to give a brief list of what I'm looking to have on this ad hoc committee. Obviously, we already talked about the PD. We have Animal Coalition here. I think they're going to be a major part of how it is that we can serve our animals in ways that the city may not be able to serve them. I think they can help complement what we can and can't do. I'd love to have two councilmembers, and I'm going to offer Phil and I to take those roles, unless someone else would like to be in those roles. Ms. Sally, you sent us a letter, a very detailed letter, of the things that we can change and enhance to make our animal control facility a better place. That's the kind of voice that I'm looking for, so I'd love to see you on this committee. Obviously, Mr. Folsom, sorry to take up more of your time. And I would love to get another nonprofit that works with our facility already to help out. I've been told that Orphaned Dogs helps out, but I'm not the one to say whether or not that would be the, another nonprofit that is also helping to serve us, so we can figure out again how it is that we can work together the best way possible. And so I'm going to leave that to the PD and Animal Control to let us know who our collaborating partners are to bring to the table. And then, two members from the public at large, so that would give us nine on the committee. And again, that's my suggestion. Vice Mayor Harris?
Other than key players that facilitate the need of different aspects of this, obviously the PD, somebody representing the PD, and somebody representing Animal Coalition, Debbie Sally I totally agree with as well, because of her expertise in the field, I think that I would prefer if the two other at-large members were citizens of the city of Clear Lake, that would be preferable to me, just because they're actively involved in experiencing what's taking place inside of our city. So I would like to say that that would probably provide the most benefit to us.
Councilmember Overton?
I have to disagree, because what the ad hoc committee does not necessarily have to be citizens from. You may have the opportunity to get people who have some really good information for you that do not live in the city. So I think to require that they have to live in the city, you might be selling yourself short on somebody that could really benefit your committee. So I don't think that they would have to, I don't, ad hoc committees, I don't believe, is, you're looking for the expertise and people who have experience and people who might be able to help you put something together. They may not be in your city. So I would say I would not go that way with the at-large. I think I would just leave it at-large.
And at this point in the past, what we've done is received applications for our ad hoc committee, and we can review the applications, and obviously, some of us might think that applications benefit from being citizens who live in Clear Lake, but I also agree with Councilmember Overton, that if we get to look at a larger pool, we get to make the best choice on who's going to be able to help us to make the right decisions. But I also don't disagree that those who live here in our city will want to see the positive effect seen in their neighborhoods and in their community as well. So we could take a look at that. Anything else for direction to our staff?
Look.
What direction are we giving?
So, we're going to open up for applications.
Yeah, how long of a period would you like to have applications out? Two weeks?
Yeah, two weeks till next council. Well, not for us to choose at next council, but to stop receiving next, in two weeks. And then afterwards, the following council, we can review all the applications and make decisions on who will be the ad hoc committee.
Couldn't we just, you can just appoint?
Yeah.
Based on the top nine. I don't know that we need to hear it again.
Okay. You want?
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, 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 no. I definitely don't disagree on that.
Okay. So then, we would accept applications for a two-week period. We'll get a notice and applications out on Monday. We'll close it in two weeks, and then you can just meet with staff and we'll appoint.
Sounds perfect to me. And Vice Mayor Harris will hand in his envelope of.
Already done.
Already filled.
Of applications already filled.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Where are we? We're moving on to number eleven. Direction regarding refunding all or a portion of assessments collected by the city from a county-held tax defaulted sale of property. Mr. Folsom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will turn this over once again to Chris Becknell, our Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. So, back on September twenty-eighth, you initially considered this issue and asked that it be returned again at a later date, because there were only four councilmembers present. I believe Mayor Perdok at that time was absent from the meeting. And to reconsider it, and you asked two things, that there be a, that it be returned for reconsideration, and that a series of bullet points be set up of the primary issues to consider. So, what I did was I put together, I attached the staff report from that original meeting, and then what I did was I summarized the council comments from that meeting, from the four members who were here, and if I didn't get all of the comments, and I apologize for that, or if I didn't represent them exactly as you remember them, I apologize. I tried to write them as clearly as I could and interpret my notes as clearly as I could, but I think I picked up the sentiments as well as I could. Let me summarize in bullet points the issues that I think are out there with regard to this particular item. And remember, the whole, the impetus of this discussion was really brought up by Ms. Allmond, who had bought a property at the tax default sale that had an assessment lien on it, and as part of the tax default sale, the county had set the prices as the taxes due, plus the lien that the city had on it. And she was cleaning up the property and came in and originally asked if the city could refund a portion of the lien, because she was cleaning up the property. I indicated at the time that there was no actual legal authority for me to do that, but that I would bring it to the council for your consideration. If you remember at that time, I was not in favor of that for any number of reasons, but nevertheless, agreed to bring it to the council for your consideration. So let me kind of summarize the issues. The amount received in the, so the bullet points are, the amount received in the tax sale may not cover the lien or assessment. So when properties are sold at a tax sale, there really are three possibilities. The property is sold for exactly the amount of the taxes that are due, plus the penalties and the liens and the assessments, in which case, the city is compensated for its lien. It may be sold for less than that amount, in which case, the regular property taxes are paid first, and the city may or may not get all or a portion, or any portion, of its lien that's due. Or, it could be sold for more than the amounts due, in which case, the city would get refunded, would get paid its lien amount. A record of the outstanding liens must be maintained by the city. I will tell you that the city does maintain that information, the city does maintain that information already. The one thing that I will tell you in this whole tax defaulted property sale, and the issue is, it came up again just recently, when the county goes through a tax defaulted sale, the only time that the city really gets noticed about properties in the city that may get sold at a tax defaulted sale is when the county puts out its notice of all the properties that may be sold at a tax default sale. That means that we, as the city, have to go through and identify what properties in there are within the city of, in the city of Clear Lake, and identify which ones of those are just property tax delinquencies, or have specific liens or assessments against them. And that can be a time-consuming process, but nevertheless, that's something that we need to do. But we do maintain those records, but it would, it does impose a burden on us to be able to go through and identify those. The time period between the assessment and payment of the release of the lien, okay, so there is a delay between the time that the tax is paid off and the lien, and the time that we get paid from the county, because there's a processing time and there is a waiting period. Should there be a relationship between the time that the property gets cleaned up and the payments that are made from the county to the city? The other issue is, there is a one-year right of redemption to, in favor of the original property owner. So what that means is, is let's assume that a property is bought at a tax defaulted sale. That property, if the original owner comes back and satisfies that lien and the taxes, they can get the property for up to one year after that tax defaulted sale. You can see the obvious problem that that creates in terms of whether a new buyer wants to invest money into the property during that time period when the property may be redeemed. How often that happens, I really don't know. It probably is a function of the value of the property versus the amount of the lien and whether that, whether that original owner comes up with any money. The time period allowed for cleanup after the tax sale. So one of the things that you would need to consider, under our current, under our current code, when an assessment is made, we do allow, if they clean up within, and I forget the time periods, within thirty days, they get a ninety percent discount from the lien. And if they clean up within sixty days, it's a lesser amount, and three months, it's a lesser amount. Question is, do you want to allow that same sort of staggered scale or graduated scale if they're, if you're allowing a cleanup after a tax defaulted sale in terms of returning those lien funds? If you even want to go down that path? Or, do you want, and do you want to assume that the cleanup must be complete? That is, most assessments that are made have several violations, so if someone buys a property at tax defaulted sale, and let's assume that there's a five thousand dollar lien, but that five thousand dollar lien is based on two different kinds of violations. If you're going to refund any of it, are you going to require them to completely clean up all of the deficiencies that were in the original lien, or is only doing one of them, clearing one of the violations sufficient to allow a refund? That's an issue that you might want to consider. Can the purchased property have any new violations? So, let's say someone buys a property at tax defaulted sale, the original lien is there, it's based on violations A, B, and C, but then, when we go out to inspect the property or to verify the property, there are in fact new violations or different violations. If there are those, are they going to be able to get any sort of refund, because they may have cleaned up the original liens, but now there's something else there? So is that kind of like, you've got to have a perfect property before you get any sort of a refund? Do you want that sort of a restriction? How much of the lien would be refunded? The question is, a hundred percent, fifty percent, twenty percent, or zero percent? And then last is, new monitoring being compensated, or is the city eating additional cost? Keep in mind that when we assess the liens, part of it is a penalty for not doing what they're supposed to do, but another part of that is compensating the city for the cost of the original inspection and work that they did imposing that lien. All right? We're now incurring new costs to go out and basically dealing with the same lien again. So we're incurring new costs. So, you know, are we going to insist on some sort of compensation for that? While we may give back the original lien, are we going to take back some of that lien or discount it in recognition that there is some cost, additional cost for doing that? Or is there going to be some sort of additional charge for doing that? Those are all kind of the issues that you need to look at in this area. So, I'm going to turn it back over to the council for you to consider. There are now five of you here. I've thrown a lot of issues, you know, at you. It's a fairly, you know, fairly complicated area. I understand, you know, the desire to want to clean up the city. I think that's the goal for everyone, but please keep in mind that it's not a zero-cost game for the city. This stuff takes time, and time is money to the city. Remember, seventy percent of our budget is salaries, and, you know, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars of our budget is spent in code enforcement. That does include any of the management's time, so, and I'm not trying to do that because I'm trying to encourage you not to do it, I'm just pointing out that there's some significant dollars involved here. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Overton?
Okay. As I said, that's going to be a lot of paperwork. You know, and I definitely want to encourage people to buy our houses and stuff, but to me, this is going to have to be more on a case. me, this is going to have to be more on a case-by-case, for one, like, how much are they going to do? And I don't believe if we do decide to go on any type of refund that we would be able to refund that for a year until we knew that they're actually the property owners for good and that they've done everything that they need to do. So I'm thinking that if we were going to do something like this, it would really have to be on a case-by-case basis, because every single one that comes to us is a different, is different money, different things that have happened with it. I can't picture us doing a flat overall thing. We definitely have to make sure that code enforcement is paying for itself. Every city code enforcement should pay for themselves, so we can't be going in the hole by giving it all back. So, you know, we would have to have, you know, something that's getting a $10,000 fine. How much time did they, did they spend on that? And how much of that would we be willing to relieve back in the first place? So I think this really, if we decide to do something like that, that there can't be a flat, we're going to do it this way. I don't see where that would work well at all. I think we'd be losing, I think we'd be putting our code enforcement in the hole if we did that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harris?
I just want to clarify something, Mr. Becknell. Within the first year, the original owner may reclaim the property by paying the default tax. Is that correct?
Correct.
So in the event, just speculating, in the event that the original owner were able to come up with the funds within the first year, but we had already taken action with the new owner, we had alleviated the amount that was paid, gave it back to them, and worked with them, and then all of a sudden, this original owner comes in and steps in and does this, pays it off and gets the property back. Now, the high bidder, we would essentially owe that high bidder back the amount of money that, that we had. Does that, am I off-base there? Because you're not getting, if the, if the original owner comes in and pays the taxes, that's all it takes to satisfy the interest to getting the property back. They don't have to pay the assessments?
Yes, they have to pay all that, so...
Okay, so everything. I just want to make sure. Okay, so to clarify then, they would have to pay on the property period.
Everything that was paid on the...
Everything was paid on the, okay, that solves that. Okay. So I'm, I'm just basing off of the amount of energy that you have put into this to trying to decipher how realistic this is. It doesn't sound like it's a very good idea. That's my opinion. And I think that what might be a better idea is to go back to the CDBG conversation about providing some sort of a funding source for the new owner to potentially provide some restoration, a loan on the restoration of the property or something of that sort, other than focusing on this real dicey, convoluted scenario where we're giving back the money, we're waiting the year and the whole, I mean, it just seems kind of crazy to me now that we're looking at all the ins and outs of this. I don't think that, I personally think it's kind of a bad idea.
Thank you. Councilmember Perdok?
Well, yeah, one of the things that we've had a problem with, with our code enforcement is just trying to get them funded so they could be up and operational. We don't even have the funding really to go in and do abatements as they come up, especially on some of the large-scale abatements. One in particular off a country club or Arrowhead, that's been sitting there for years because I think it's bank-owned or whatever. But we don't have the money to clean it up. I think we're far from being self-funded through code enforcement and through the penalties, and I just think that this would deepen the hole that we're in.
Councilmember Bennett?
The easy answer is to waive the lien. Easy answer is, is to waive the liens or the assessment. However, time is money. Even over to police department, when you go in for a release of a vehicle, you're paying for the dispatcher clerk's time to do the paperwork. When you go in to have a ticket signed off for a mechanical violation, there's a charge for that because an officer is being called in from the field to sign off that violation. There's a cost for doing business. A lot of work goes into, to putting these liens on by code enforcement and staff. Not only just going out and taking the pictures, but the paperwork is momentous. The files are momentous. And it's not just, you see some of the things we did today, it goes back to 2016, and this happens time after time. Again, time is money. The city is, Councilman Perdok said, the city cannot afford to put code enforcement in a hole. They have to be compensated. The city needs to be compensated for their time.
So I'm going to be the odd man out on this one. When we do assessments, I get worried by looking at certain properties when we're assessing $7,500 on a property that I don't think is worth $7,500, let alone the tax default, let alone the actual price of the land itself. For instance, I've been talking with a gentleman who bought a property that should have cost him $9,000 for essentially a 50 by 100 lot, and that's a little bit more than I think a 50 by 100 lot should cost, especially with dealing with the cleanup on top of that afterwards. I want to see people investing in our community, and if we add tax defaults and we add all the extra fines that we're putting on top, it's putting a hinder on us, and we're actually trapping some of our properties from ever being invested in. And we're going to have to wait and wait and wait for the value of land to go up to a certain level for people to finally say, yes, absolutely, I will, I will invest because now I can make money and make profit here. We're not there yet, and I think that we need to have any possible incentives. This is why we brought the ordinance to us to potentially decrease the fines if you clean up your property within 30 days, 60 days, and so on. And so I'm looking at all these questions, and I thank you for the summary of issues that you brought to us here, Mr. Becknell, but I think there's some pretty simple things that we can do. Number one, we only had 20 properties sold in the last tax sale, and it's been over a year, close to a year since the last tax sale. So we're not talking about a huge amount right now. Would love to see the county do more, obviously, but at this moment, and before that, I don't think there was an auction for, what, two, three years?
Longer than that.
Longer than that. So we're really not talking about a whole lot of properties here. We just dealt with 10 today, and they're dealing with 400 to 500 on a daily basis as we speak just currently. So if we're looking at 20, let's say 50, just to round it up for hoping that we have to deal with more of these later on, and all we do is wait a year and take no action on it, unless of course, there's a code violation and we start a new file, which at this point cancels the ability for any kind of refund. 365 days after it's sold on tax auction, we go and visit the place. If all the code violations are cleaned up, and if there's no new code violations at all, then we give them a certain percentage back in order to keep investing into our community. Because right now, if nothing gets sold for the years that we didn't have auctions, or if zero of the 20 properties put on tax auction never sold, we would never see any of those revenues, and that is not what we're depending on for our city to move forward. And I, I don't, sorry, I almost used the word "hey," I'm sorry about that. I don't like this idea that it should pay for itself, because at one point, it is harassment for code enforcement if we want it to pay for itself by continuously giving fines away on people. We want to clean up our city. That's what we want to do. We do not want to have fines continuously going so that we can pay for our own code enforcement. And I think that to clean up our city, we need people to invest in our city, and if we offer an opportunity where investment will give you something back in return, something we weren't, didn't even have in our hands, and all we have to do is wait a year, go visit 20 properties or 50 properties in order to just assess, is this a situation where we can say, thank you very much for investing, here's some return on your investment, and now continue, please continue investing in our community? I really don't see that as a difficult task. And I think that's all that I... There should be no new violations, 100% cleanup, no percentages, no anything of that. It needs to be pristine if you want to get something back in return. Granted, I just put out there, you get 50% of the amount received, not 50% of what we leaned, because if we don't get the full amount back, let's say we put a $5,000 lien and all we got was 500, you would, you would get $250 back, because that's what we receive back from the county, and we're not going to give away the bank. But I think that if we offer an incentive to invest in our community, we're going to see a difference versus taking more from those who already paid above and beyond what the cost of the actual property is. Because I'm going to be honest, I don't want to invest in those properties if I have to pay the tax default, the liens, and everything else, but I might be interested if there's going to be a kickback for my investment in this community on those types of properties.
Will you open it up for public?
Since there's so many people here, let's go ahead and open it back up again.
You haven't opened it.
You didn't open it.
Well, then let's open it up for the first time.
Hi, everybody. I'm Zach Swedenbank, and I'm someone who would benefit from this quite a bit, and I don't think you should do it. So I just want to say, I've bought multiple properties at the last few tax auctions. It's been a few years apart. I invest a lot in Clear Lake. That's a known expense when you buy those. You get those at a very discounted rate already. You've got to, we're incentivized to buy in those properties because of the price we're getting them, and we have to clean them up. We know that. We look at them before we buy them. We make that decision based on what we're going to pay. If you want to do, I understand the incentivizing people to invest. Makes total sense. I'd love for you to do that. Just do it before the next tax auction. Let everybody know, because for all of those that invested and bid against each other and everything, not knowing that was an option, I would have bought other properties for the amount that's out there that you guys got, because I could have got half of that back. So it's not fair to me that I would have bought those, right? If I would have known about it. So you can't do it retroactively. So in the future, if you want to make that an incentive or an option, go ahead and do it. But going back, I'll benefit, but I would have benefited more if I would have known about it. So, just wanted to throw out there, because why take money out of your pocket when we all bought it at the lesser price, knowing that there was no option for that? I would have paid more if I would have known that I could have got some of that back and you would have made more. Just like two cents.
Thank you.
Let me clarify that the minimum bid includes all liens on the property. So all taxes, all liens from the city, all liens from the utilities are all in that, and that is your minimum bid, is the way it starts. Now, it may have been different in the past, but I can assure you now that that is the way it goes. We talked about this, and the only reason, and I asked about it because I thought there was a $5,000 amount on that property. And the reason is, nobody bid on that property until the last day of the sale in the afternoon when I finally bought the property, not because I wanted the property for an investment, but I was tired of the robberies and the things that I had to deal with, with the crack house that I lived with. So what I really was trying to do, and we've talked, talked to several of you over the last year, was to incent people to kind of invest and do the cleanup. The problem I have is that we're not cleaning up the properties. We keep taxing them or fining them, but there's no cleanup process. And the problem is, is that those properties are being lived in, whether they're red-tagged, whether they, all those awful-looking properties are probably primarily being occupied by the homeless, or the crack, or whatever they might be. But it's the effect that it is having on your neighborhoods, and that's really the problem. I wouldn't have bought this house if it weren't having a real negative effect on me. So I had two choices. I could move out of the city, or I could buy this house and at least get control of it. And that's where you're looking at. So I'm not talking about your investment, people, although at least it's an incentive. And it also allows you to feel like, as you put those fines, because we're getting into hefty fines now, which is not a bad thing. But we worked for four years with code enforcement. I had three years of having it be red-tagged, and we had continuous living in that property with continuous party. So I'm looking at it, and I, I agree that you're looking at an incentive for people to come up and make the cleanup. So I don't, I'm not trying for any of that money, and I, once I realized that it was only $200, $500, I didn't expect you guys to, one, pay all of it, and, two, that wasn't enough money to make a big difference for it. But when you're starting to look at thousands, you know, five, seven, $10,000, that's an incentive for somebody to pay that and actually get it cleaned up. And I cleaned that property up, at least from a visual standpoint, within three days of ownership. It took me a little bit longer to get the outside completely hauled away, which it now has been, and I'm going to be working with somebody tomorrow to go into the house, which looked very much like many of these houses, absolutely full. So when you're trying to incent not the developers, not the land speculators, but the people in our community to actually take back parts of our community, that's where that incentive might help.
Thank you.
Chuck Leonard, City of Clear Lake. Cheryl's a friend of mine, and she's done a lot for the city, but I got to go against her on this one. I think as long as you keep backing up Bruno and running away from these things, you're never going to clean this city up. There's given, people have a property that's a pigpen for two years, and then you finally assess them. Then they got 30 days, they cleaned it up, they now get, only pay, say it's a $5,000 fine, they pay $500. That's not right to the people who live next to the place. And if you're going to do this with the tax sales, it may go two years, then you put it on. Now, within 30 days, if it's cleaned up, they get 90%, you know, reduced. But if it takes another year for them to sell it, what dates are you going to use on these things? It just doesn't make any sense to me. There has to be a time when you draw a line in the sand and say, somebody's got to pay for these things. We really need people to stand up for the community, not for people that aren't taking care of things.
Thank you. Anybody else who wish to speak on this subject? Please come up to the mic.
You were mentioning some property on Arrowhead, and isn't there a way that we could have a volunteer force that helps go around and cleaning these places up? I'd be a volunteer. I want to be part of the city. I want to love it here. I, you know, I want to be here. I want it to be clean. I wish there was more jobs here. You know, I wish Conoco was open. I wish the lady talked about a boardwalk. I never even thought of that idea. What a great idea. This place needs, you know, a little more. My brother, my cousin, they both got fishing boats. They don't want to put their boat in the waters. Eh, you know, it's all negative. But I'd love to see nothing more than these houses being cleaned up. You're calling my container black and a nuisance, which I don't think it's a nuisance, because I think a nuisance means somebody has to be complaining, and there's no, there's no complaining. But there's houses, I drove back in, in back of the police station, is that the second? And the streets, there's two or three burned-out houses, a couple burned-up trailers back there. It looks disgusting. You know, I'd spend a couple days off or take a week of vacation and volunteer, you know, drive my pickup truck or whatever it takes. You know, I want to, I want to be part of the solution. I don't want to be a part of the problem. And what's wrong with that? You know, I don't, ad hoc, is that, does that mean it's volunteer? You know, I don't know a lot about all this stuff, but I'd like to know more about it, and I'd like to be more involved. And, you know, I encourage everybody, yes, you can own a house in California. You're going to have to do like I do. Over the hill, through the woods, to grandmother's house I go. And you can buy a house. And in the six years I've been here, everything's basically gone up $100,000. So what, now my house is worth 130 or 40 or whatever it's worth? That is nothing. You, you can't buy a two-bedroom, two-bath, 1940 bungalow in Calistoga for less than $650,000 or $750,000, and you're buying that as-is. It probably needs foundation work, the roof, roof leaks, the, you know, the problems, the problems, the problems.
Sir, I'm going to try to bring you back on the topic at hand, which is whether we choose to do a refund or not.
The community volunteer something to, to help clean up some of these properties.
And if you stay after the meeting, I'll give you information on how you can get involved with CC4C, which is an awesome group who does exactly as you're asking about.
And then, one other point, they were talking about cleaning these properties. What about Habitat for Humanity? Can't they get involved? Habitat for Humanity? Can't they get involved?
And they do get involved. But right now, we're talking about whether or not we choose to do a refund of assessed liens on properties once they are sold through tax sales.
So I think, I think I'm going to be involved in that somehow. I don't know. They're going to put a lien on my property, or?
And that will not take away your home. That will only be paid for if it's sold.
Is that what liens mean? When, if I sell it or refinance it, so then, so really, then I'm done here, as far as the liens?
No, that's not the case.
I will stay, and I'll get the information from you, and I do want to...
No, that is not the case. You jumped to a whole new level of, that's not what we're doing. Yeah. Please stay after the meeting. I'd love to talk. Yep. Anybody else wish to speak on this? And I'll bring it back to the council. Councilmember Bennett?
You know, I'm familiar with the property that Cheryl spoke about, and it was a pain for the neighbors up there. It was a pain for the police department. And she did step up and buy that property at a lien sale. I don't think it's an answer, the right answer is to take it on a case-by-case basis, because what is, what deciding factors would you use? I think there has to be a definitive point as to what you do. I think you made a good point, Mr. Mayor. A percentage, 50%, maybe that'll pay for a bit, quite a bit of what code enforcement has put in. I do think that, I do think it cannot be retroactive. What's done is done. And I, Cheryl understands that. It's looking forward. But we do want to encourage these blighted pieces of property to be removed or improved within our community. I think we need to hit happy medium, but not make it a giveaway as such. The city cannot support it or finance it as such.
Vice Mayor Harris? Go ahead, move on. You're done?
So I believe that there's consensus not to move forward with this. Am I correct in that?
I am in agreeance.
And that is your direction? Mr. Folsom, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm very excited. If you haven't read the article, or you didn't show up, we have the beginnings of a Big Five and Tractor Supply here in Clear Lake, the former Ray's Market across from Walmart. It's been vacant for over a year. The Carrington Company has come in and purchased the property. They've demoed the interior. They're about to be demoing the exterior, if they haven't gotten started with that already. They're planning to turn that over to the tenants in just a few months to do their tenant improvements. And Big Five and Tractor Supply should be open this summer, so we're real excited about that. And some apparently people in our audience are as well. We had a planning, we had a very productive Planning Commission meeting last week where we reviewed the Clear Lake cottages. They came in with some proposed expansion plans. We looked at the architecture on a very workshop, informal basis. The Planning Commission gave them some input, and we should be seeing them come back in for a use permit for the expansion of that project. So we're very excited about that as well. I attended a meeting of the Lake County EDC, is Economic Development Corporation, last week. The Sauvignon Blanc experience, the Sauvignon Blanc experience is a new event that's going to be happening on May 4th and 5th in Kelseyville. We're going to be supporting it as the Clear Lake Chamber with an ancillary event as well. But if you're not familiar, Sauvignon Blanc is a type of wine. It's a varietal. It's one of the main premier varietals that are produced here in Clear Lake, sorry, Lake County. But it really, we have tremendous land for producing this varietal. So I'm a wino, so I like these. We had a meeting of our marketing committee. The report was in the consent calendar. We met with the United States Department of Agriculture with regard to the animal control facility that we're looking to purchase next door. We had a meeting on universal garbage, on the implementation of that. We've got a number of applications for exemption on that, so we're working through how to implement that program. We had a very productive meeting with PG&E with regard to the Rule 28 program. The Rule 28 program has to do with undergrounding the overhead wires. So we're, as you probably know, we are working on a project for the Civic Center, what we're calling the Civic Center, frontage improvements, all around, City Hall, Lakeshore, over here, up Olympic, over to Pine. We're going to be putting in brand-new curb gutter sidewalk frontage improvements, primarily on the north side of the road. There's, I think, six or seven poles, electric poles, PG&E poles, that we want to have all those wires undergrounded if we can get them to work with us on that project. So, but they seem very positive about it. Cornerstone Villages, I had a productive meeting with them with regard to a proposed transitional housing project. I gave them some homework on what to do to start bringing that forward. So they're, they have some potential financing to do something, so something might happen with that. We had a Country Club Road Rehab Project Open House. We actually, gosh, how many people? There was, there was a full table full of people that came out. We got a late start on getting it advertised, but the turnout was really good. We got a lot of good input on that, so I think everybody was pleased with that open house. Successor Agency Oversight Board, we had that meeting this morning. You went over the ROPS this evening. We also had a cannabis ad hoc committee meeting this afternoon as well. I want to let you know about some events that are coming up. Just reminder, we do have a special council meeting next Thursday. We'll have a Planning Commission meeting the following Tuesday on February 6th. That same night, there's a Clear Lake Chamber mixer at Vista del Lago. The 8th, we've got the regular city council meeting. The 10th, I've been told there's an Animal Coalition Dinner, but I'd like to get that flyer so we can get that information out if possible. February 22nd, again, the second regular council meeting of the month, and the 24th is the Rotary Seafood Boil. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Overton?
I'm going to pass on my report. Pretty much everybody will say everything by the time it's done, so.
Okay. Councilmember Bennett?
Along with the other councilmembers, attended the groundbreaking up at the old Ray's for Big Five and Tractor Supply. That is not only going to impact our community, but all of Lake County. I have gotten comments from family members and friends and all over South County, Lakeport, waiting for both entities to open up in our community. It is, it's just going to impact our whole county. Business that would have been taken out of county by both businesses are going to be kept local. It's a big one. I want to thank Councilmember Harris for attending the AVA meeting for me. I was unable to make that due to the cough that everybody has going around, the chest congestion and everything. I just was not able to make it. So he'll make a report on that, I'm sure. Another nap, about all I have.
Councilmember Perdak?
Attended many of the same meetings that have already been reported, so I won't labor that point. Also attended the ribbon cutting. It was wonderful to be up there. Just on a sidebar, the City of Clear Lake really doesn't have anything to say over what stores go into which retail buildings. That's up to the developer. I've seen, heard lots of, or seen lots of comments, heard lots of comments about why not this store, why not that store. It's up to the developer to decide that and who can occupy that space. We're just happy to see them here, and I'll be glad when they're opened up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harris?
I got a bit of a mouthful today. So I attended an AVA meeting on the 17th for Nick, and we're making great progress getting some of these abandoned cars off the streets, which is great. I mean, we're headed in the right direction. Along with the mayor and Charmin Weldon, our lead volunteer at the animal shelter, we attended a meeting with Rita for the Animal Coalition, kind of discussed the spay and neutering of our pet population, working towards a viable future where we work together, hand in hand, to create a better environment. I had the opportunity to ride along with Public Works Department and assisted in clearing drainage crossings and participated in their safety meeting. I felt very welcome and warm. I commend our Public Works Director, Mr. Heron, with his team. They were a pleasure to work with. I really appreciated every bit of it. So, you're doing a great job over there. I know that's growing rapidly, and they're doing a great job pulling it together, so it's fantastic. I volunteered with my team at the youth center to relocate an HVAC unit from the ground to the roof in order to make room for the boxing ring that's coming, because we're going to have boxing. I keep talking about that, because I want people to be excited. So I attended the groundbreaking at the Big Five Tractor Supply. I anticipate that to have a financial impact on me directly, because I spend a lot of money at those two stores. On Tuesday, the 23rd, I worked with point-in-time for the homeless count, volunteered all day with a group. So we were attempting to get an accurate count of the current homeless population in our community, so we are better equipped to take action on their needs. On Wednesday, the 24th, yesterday, I had the pleasure of riding along with Officer Baredo of the Clear Lake Police Department. In that, we had a hit-and-run accident took place first, within just a few minutes. It was followed by a stolen vehicle recovery, an arrest of illegal camping, arrest on stolen tags, arrest on illegal dagger possession. And while assisting a couple other officers at Walmart, we were taking some pictures that were being requested by some children with the officers, which I thought was fantastic. So I was snapping the pictures. We heard a large commotion, and over at the transit, the bus transit stop there by the old Ray's, the officers immediately took action. They ran across the road, or ran across the parking lot, and they were met with violence by a male subject. Officer Bats and Sergeant Cook arrived within seconds to assist, and they fought a female who, to the ground, who happened to have and was in reach of a loaded sawed-off shotgun. So the situation was handled extremely well. The shotgun turned out to be a stolen in an armed robbery. She had a $50,000 felony warrant for stolen car out of Oakland. And I just got to say, in, I'm very, very proud of our police force. And Chief Selly, I got to, I'm profoundly impressed with your officers. Their actions are nothing short of heroic. And to think that all of this took place in only four hours on the job with them. And you imagine, that's four hours out of a 24-hour day, out of a 365-day year. I'm very proud of your team. Really appreciate that. So, there's one thing I'd like to add as an agenda item, and I just ask that the staff collectively work to develop a plan that addresses and remedies the various issues affecting our existing temporary shelter, and as we're pending construction, obviously, of the new facility, and provide a report back to council by our first meeting in March. On animal control, yeah. Well, on the animal control facility, detention facility, I guess. And that is all.
Could I ask what the ad hoc committee's then about? Isn't that kind of part of the ad hoc committee, and going to be talking about and bringing back ideas to the council? Or is this something different that you want? I'm just trying to figure out what it is.
I'm specifically asking to take a look at the situations that are facing the shelter as it is right now, and to just see what we can do to take some corrective action, make a decision as to what we can do to remedy some of these issues, kind of quicker than, yeah. Because obviously, we have a plan down the road of what we're going to be doing, but the timeframe is a ways down the road, and we're going to do some things, I'm going to do some things personally to try to help get some heat over there and stuff, but I'm just wanting to take a closer look at it, get everybody collectively on board with that.
And basically, the ad hoc committee probably wouldn't meet until late March, possibly, realistically, I think that would be around that timeframe.
I was just making sure that we're doing something.
Yeah, if we can get some information brought back to us in early March, okay? That's it?
You got nothing?
No, I'm asking.
Yeah, that's it.
All right. All right. And you skipped straight to the future agenda without my report. But most of, most of what I did was, I already said, I did go to the LAFCO meeting. We discussed, kind of sad, but also exciting to see change. Cobb area mountain has nine, well, more. We only discussed nine out of the 12 water districts up there. And ever since the valley fire, a lot of those districts have been struggling to maintain proper water amounts, or water, yeah, water amounts, and also proper water that is potable for drinking. And so a lot of districts have been purchasing water from other districts. It's been a very difficult task to maintain what is happening up there, especially with the loss of clientele. There was one water district that was down to 12 customers. And so there, we're looking at combining all nine of those water districts over the course of five to 10 years, and at the cost of about $15 million. All of this is going to come through grants. And it's exciting, large task, but if we want to see growth occurring again in the future in the Cobb area, that's something that we all decided to support and continue to work on. Everything else, I think, I did take part of a chess tournament at the KEC. It happens every month. I'll try and remind people next time that it comes around, because I don't know when the next date is. I want to say it's February 13th. But I'll say that at the next council meeting. And, oh, yes, can't forget, the Bike Angels came to town last Saturday. I want to thank Candy Alcott and also Tatanka's for hosting the event. Gave away approximately 150 bicycles to community members who lost their homes or were evacuated. There was some really awesome stories that came out of that as well. There was a group of three children, I want to say they were seven, nine, and 13, they were in that age range, who had sat on the corner of their street and sold every single one of their toys in order to donate to families who lost a house. And in exchange, in this event, the Bike Angels gave them a present in return and gave them bikes, saying thank you for their big hearts. That's what we have in our community, and that's what we love our community. And thank you for coming tonight for our meeting. Unless there's any future agenda items, our meeting is adjourned.